Good evening, members and officers. Special welcome to our two officers at the rear of the room who have joined us to observe an executive meeting. So, welcome Mrs Garnett and Mrs Dunn, and also to those in the public gallery this evening. Good evening to you all. So, the first item on this evening's executive agenda is to confirm the minutes of the meeting that was held on the 10th of October and those of the special meeting held on the 6th of November. These have been laid on the table for half an hour. Are you content that I sign these at the end of the meeting, colleagues?
Agreed.
Thank you. Moving to apologies for absence, I understand that none have been received. Mrs McCollum?
None received, leader.
Thank you. And if we move to declarations of interest. Executive members, any declarations of interest? No. I, Mr Taylor, I think we do have declarations of interest.
Yes, thank you, leader. Tom Hallwood and Graham Clark have declared interest in agenda item 19, and both will leave the chamber during consideration of the item.
Thank you very much. If we move to item four, which is questions from members of the public, and we have one question that has been received from Mr David Beaman of Farnham. The question and answer have been circulated separately and tabled, and I think, I understand, a copy has also been given to Mr Beaman. Thank you. So, if we move to item five on the agenda, which is the Budget Management Report and the Midyear Review. councillor Hall to introduce the item.
Thank you, leader. I'm pleased to report we are forecast to be on budget for the year in the general account for both the revenue and the capital account. I'm also pleased to report we are forecast to be on budget for the housing revenue account. The officers and staff in the finance department deserve to be congratulated. This, given the challenges, has been no mean feat. Once again, I must caution members that significant financial uncertainties still exist. We will continue to maintain robust financial discipline against this backdrop and be prepared for any external budgetary shocks should they materialise, leader. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Hall. Colleagues, any comments on the budget items? We have some 15 recommendations under that item, so I don't know if anyone wants to comment or speak on any of those, or are they fairly self-explanatory? Okay, in that case, colleagues, I'll take the recommendations for item five on block. There are 15 recommendations. Executive, are those agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you. Can I move then to item six, which is the setting of the council tax base and business rates for 2018/19? Councillor Hall?
Thank you, leader. There are two recommendations under item six. The first is for the council tax base for Waverley for the year 2018/2019. The second one is to approve the business rate estimates for the same years, leader. Thank you.
Councillor Hall, thank you. Colleagues, anything to add, or shall I move to the recommendations? There are two recommendations under item six. Are those agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you. And item seven is council tax discretionary relief policy. Again, councillor Hall?
Thank you again, leader. The purpose of this item is to delegate the ability to apply discretionary relief for council taxpayers. This is usually done in the case of hardship, but the full details are outlined in appendix one. The new policy has a higher degree of transparency, leader. Thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor Hall. Colleagues, we again have two recommendations under item seven. Are those agreed?
Agreed.
Item eight, which is the report of the independent remuneration panel, and that, I believe, we have one speaker, councillor Isherwood. Thank you.
Thank you, leader. Just two very, very brief comments. Several years ago, councillor Adam Taylor-Smith recommended that we reduce the number of councillors from 57 to significantly reduce our allowance bill for councillors, somewhere around the 40 mark. Just wonder where we're going with that. And looking at the recommendations, I noticed the Audit Committee, which seems to be doing a great deal of work, is singled out really to have a lower allowance for the chair of that Audit Committee. I just found that quite surprising. I'd like your comments, please.
Councillor Isherwood, thank you. I know the Audit Committee has come up as a comment from us, and we did ask the panel to go through and look at all responsibilities, and it's my understanding that the independent panel did actually review all roles, not just the overview and scrutiny roles, and felt that the allowances for the Audit Committee, the Chair and Vice Chair, were appropriate when comparing with other councils. I think we're all conscious that our Audit Committee Chair and Vice Chair do an awful lot of work. They put an awful lot of time and energy, as do the whole Audit Committee, into the process. I'm happy that we, again, as soon as we're able to ask for another review, ask that that be looked at again, but ultimately, we have to take the advice of the panel, and at this time, their view was that it was the scrutiny committees that they were suggesting were changed. But I take on board your point. I recall the comments made by councillor Taylor-Smith, and I know that we did initially look at a boundary review. Can't remember exactly when it was, but I know we looked at a boundary review, and it wasn't fitting in with the electoral cycle that it needed to. But again, that's something that if members feel very strongly about, we can ask the Boundary Commission to go away and look at. I think we felt at the time that we had the last discussion, Waverley is an extremely large borough geographically, and we needed to be mindful of that in terms of if we went down in terms of members and how they would cover that. And what we've also got now is, obviously, we've got an increase in terms of housing and population, which we also need to be mindful of. But again, we can discuss that offline, and if members feel that we should have another review, then that certainly would be something that we, you know, we're happy to look at. So, colleagues, to the point that I sort of just really raised, we have got the report in front of you, the independent panel, and I'd like to thank the three members of the independent panel who were here and did a lot of work looking at members' roles. They really focused on the fact that, as I say, we resolved at our meeting back in February when we went forward with our four new scrutiny committees to look at the allowances for the Chair and Vice Chairs of those committees. They looked at a number of different ways that that could be funded, and they felt that the recommendations that they have and you see before you were the fairest way in which to deal with that, and so that is the recommendation that's before you tonight. Councillor Edwards?
Thank you, leader. Just to say a big thank you to the Remuneration Panel for this report. However, I would support councillor Isherwood with regard to the Chair and Vice Chair of the Audit Committee. Having been a previous Chair, I look at what they are doing now, and I'm very, very impressed at the work they're carrying out. And if possible, we should look at these appointments for an increase in allowances because they are well worth their money, and I must congratulate them on the excellent work that they've been carrying out. Thank you.
Councillor Edwards, thank you. I mean, I'm happy to go back through Mr Taylor and Mrs McQuillan and speak to the independent panel again and ask them to review that aspect of their decision, if that would be helpful. I don't have a problem with that. I think we all recognise they put an awful lot of work in, and as I say, I'm happy to go back again in the light of comments being made by members. So, in that case, if we approve the recommendations as are and go back on the Audit Committee?
Well, no, because the recommendation is that it's approved, so you have to amend the recommendation.
Right, okay. In that case, what we'll need to do, given the recommendations, is we'll need to ask that another report come forward, and I would suggest we make sure that comes through for the beginning of January. We have an executive the first week of January. So, executive, would you be content that we move forward with that?
Agreed.
Okay. Is that all right for the record, Mr Taylor?
Thank you.
Right. In that case, thank you, councillor Isherwood. Are you content that we move in that direction?
Thank you, leader.
No, that's fine. We then move on to item nine, which is the Customer Services Review. Councillor Martin?
Thank you, leader. Members, we're well aware that this administration, this leadership, has put customer services as a key priority, and indeed, it features quite heavily in the corporate strategy and will be in the new corporate strategy. Much work has been undertaken, and this is essentially reporting on much of that work and with essentially a plan of what's coming up in the future. This has been looked at by the Overview and Scrutiny Committee, both at its inception many months ago and more recently, and I think has broad member approval, so I would commend this to members.
Thank you, councillor Martin. Colleagues, any comments you wish to add to this? Councillor Edwards?
Thank you, leader. I welcome this recommendation and the recognition from the Overview and Scrutiny Committee for the less literate computer skills members of the borough. It is important that we include everybody in our service levels, and I'm pleased to see that they recognise this, and I welcome this report. Thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor Edwards. Colleagues, in that case, on that item, we have one recommendation under item nine. Is that agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you. We now start a number of planning reports led by councillor Storey. So, the first is item 10, which is the Community Infrastructure Levy, or SIL, as it's called, the Draft Charging Schedule. Councillor Storey?
Thank you, leader. I don't want to go over what's in the report. I'm sure you've all read it. What I would like to just point out is that introducing SIL goes alongside the local plan process, and we've taken the view that we should be ready when we are able to start charging SIL, as a result of which, we've already gone through a number of the stages that are required in terms of talking to and consulting with members of the community. So, we've had the first, the preliminary, had results back on that, and we've now got the draft, and we have to put that out for a further consultancy. The requirement is for four weeks, but given the onset of the Christmas holidays, we'll probably do longer than that. But what we're asking for tonight is that the Draft Charging Schedule, which is included in the annexes, is approved so that that process can go ahead. There have been a number of recommendations in the budget, not our budget, the national budget, for changes to the scheme in SIL. They really are unlikely to affect us particularly deeply, although some of them might be very helpful, such as the increasing of charges in line with the increase in house price rather than an increase in building costs. So, I have two recommendations, leader, and I hope that they will be approved.
Councillor Storey, thank you very much. Colleagues, anything that you wish to add to that? No? In that case, we'll move to the recommendations. Two recommendations on page six. Are they agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you. I now move to item 11, which is the Brownfield Land Register. Councillor Storey?
Thank you. The Brownfield Land Register is a requirement. We must publish part one of the Brownfield Land Register by the end of December. Part one is non-controversial in the sense that it's simply a list of brownfield land that is available that meets four criteria. The second part is where there is some greater controversy, shall we say, but we're not at that stage yet. So, this recommendation is simply that you note the contents of the report and make sure that we can actually publish part one by the 31st of December and not incur any wrath from the government. Thank you.
Councillor Storey, thank you. Colleagues, anything to add, or can we move to the recommendation under item 11? In that case, is that recommendation agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you. So, item 12, which is the Development Control and the Improvement Plan, that item has two speakers. The first councillor Coburn. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, leader. The last time I spoke to the executive, I admit, was not my finest hour, and I may not apologise for my passion, never will I apologise for that, but I do apologise for my incoherence. I shall do better this time because I've written something down. Last time, I made too many assumptions. I assumed for a start you'd all read the Farnham Neighbourhood Plan and that you understood its positive attitude towards development in Farnham. I assumed that you all knew that development in Farnham is constrained by saved policy from the South East Plan, NRM 6. I also assumed that you knew that Waverley's first duty under that policy was to direct development away from the Thames Basin Heath Spa and to seek mitigation only when other sites are unavailable. I assumed you all knew that the plan was challenged by developers and that it was examined in public at a formal hearing with evidence from Natural England to reassure the examiner that there was sufficient sang provision to cover site allocations and, more importantly, windfalls as we go forward. I assumed you all knew that the plan had been endorsed by a large majority and had overcome a challenge in the courts, thanks in no small measure to Dan Baybridge and his legal team at Waverley. I also assumed that you understood how important the plan was in Waverley's defence of current appeals in the Farnham area. In brief, I assumed that the Waverley executive fully understood and valued the work and commitment over four or five years of the largest community it serves. I could not, and still cannot, understand how this executive decided to render the Farnham Neighbourhood Plan out of date within weeks of its being made. My emotional plea last time was interpreted as a simple plea for no extra housing in Farnham. It was Farnham being awkward again. There were somewhat patronising responses about the other settlements, none of which has completed its neighbourhood plan, although we've all had the same amount of time in which to do it. The plea was never about the quantity of housing, but always about the timing of its imposition. Farnham has never worked of housing targets. When the community started its work, there were no figures in existence. Even when Waverley settled on 2033, it was treated as a minimum. Farnham actively seeks development opportunities, especially on brownfield sites, very relevant to the previous item, and even if Farnham eventually has to take a figure of around 2780, the current plan, the current neighbourhood plan as it stands, guarantees sufficient delivery for the borough at 146 DPA up to 2028. The plan also includes, as those of you who've read it will know, a pledge to review the plan to address any shortfall identified over the last five years or so. So, why am I here again tonight, not ranting, fortunately? I do care passionately about the town in which I live, my children live, my grandchildren live, but I actually have a wider passion in general for planning. I care deeply about the subject and read about, well, I'm short of it, as much as I can. I work closely with Peter Isherwood and officers to deliver reasonable planning decisions. As you're going to time me out in any minute, I'm just going to say that without the protection of a made neighbourhood plan, those items that you have stated will be accepted. In the absence of a local plan, we will not be able to defend those appeals in Farnham. The assumption in paragraph 7 on 113 would be correct if the borough had not rendered the plan out of date, but as things stand, this is not the case. Sorry, I shouldn't have gone on so long at the beginning. I've got far more to say, and I'm really sad that we are in danger of going into special measures, and that is the point I wanted to make tonight.
Thank you, councillor Coburn. Obviously, I totally understand your concerns around the plan and the neighbourhood plan, and I won't go into a lot of detail on that. What I would like to reassure you on is the fact that the planning team and our legal team are wholeheartedly committed to all those, the appeals to which you refer. There was one, I know, last week, and they will be working hard and are working hard to ensure that there is a strong defence in respect of those appeals. And I sincerely hope that, whilst I understand that there are concerns and a lot of emotions running very high in Farnham over the increased housing number, that, as we've said before, and I know you've been in and spoken to Mrs Sims and officers already, that we can actually work together to find a way forward. Thank you. Councillor Isherwood?
Thank you very much indeed, leader. Could I take Carol Coburn's comments, couldn't I? I must say that I was involved with the Hesamere Local Plan, which still has not been made. As we know, there's only one made plan, and that's Farnham. If the whole of the borough was covered by a local plan, I'd feel a whole lot happier. I've attended several appeals recently and listened with interest. We haven't got the results yet, but I do worry about, A, the cost of defending our appeals. I worry about going into special measures. I have particular thoughts on the bullet points in paragraph 12, pages 114, 115 of the report, and would like to emphasise those as needing urgent action, I think. Member training, officer workshops, member training, oblique officer workshops to reinforce a new target threshold, and implications for not meeting it. I do have great concerns. I sit on the JPC as the chairman, and I look at the figures that we are facing. Was it 6.4% at the moment? Yeah, 6.4. We're getting close to the final target figure where we could finish up in special measures. I know there are all sorts of ways of looking at it, but I do have concern. I want us to be in control of our planning department and all the majors because the developers out there get together, they are all speaking with one voice, and I want us to be strong. I hope the local plan goes through, but more importantly, I think the Farnham Neighbourhood Plan has been excellently prepared by councillor Coburn and others. I mean, three years ago, when Hesamere were invited to look at what Farnham was doing, I was impressed enormously by the fact that it was a non-political committee, they were talking about planning in the proper sense, without using any political bias whatsoever. It was really a work of art, and I wish many of us could follow in that example, but I do endorse what councillor Coburn has said earlier on. It is important that we really get our local plan together, we get our training in place. Bullet points on paragraph 12 really are important. Thank you, leader.
Councillor Isherwood, thank you. Councillor Storey?
We've been working for some considerable time on making changes within the planning department in order to ensure that the targets which the government set are met as far as we can and that we work as efficiently as possible. The table within the report, you will see that in all of the key requirements, we are well within the prescribed limits, except for major appeals, where, as councillor Isherwood said, we have a 6.4% position, but which that may change as the results of appeals come in. And I agree with councillor Isherwood absolutely that this is a matter of some grave concern. I also would not like to see this council in special measures on planning. There are a number of steps that can be taken if that's... if that unfortunate situation occurs where we lose all of these planning appeals, which I certainly don't think will happen, but if that should happen, there are a number of steps that we can take to go to the Secretary of State and explain the special circumstances under which these appeals have been allowed, which really relate to the fact that the local plan position has created an unusual and unbalanced playing field. One of the main things that was found in the analysis stage of the process was that the level of training within the staff within the planning department, and the level of training for councillors on planning committees, needed improvement. And that is a process which has started and which we are continuing. I've also spoken with the planning department about talking with the parish councils about their involvement in the planning process, and trying to improve the way in which we communicate with them. And so I'd like to put on record my thanks to the Oversight and Scrutiny Committee for their comments, which, much of which is helpful. And we have a number of recommendations relating to various things. I think there are six of them, and I hope that you will support all of those recommendations in order to take the planning department forward. I can say that one of the great things that has occurred is that the government has told us that the fees for planning applications are going to be rising, and as a result of that, we should have a bit more money in order to make sure that we can keep the planning department going as efficiently as it is now.
Thank you, Storey. Colleagues, any other comments to add? I think there are some key points that we can draw from this report, and I think, like a number of us, to see a figure of over half a million pounds being spent, or having been spent on costs and actually defending appeals over the last two years is absolutely horrendous. We have to defend appeals, no one's arguing that. But I think it's a great shame that, you know, we've had to get into that position, partially because of the situation in terms of not having a sound local plan. Hopefully, you know, we're well on the way with that now, and let's hope, as councillor Isherwood said, and others have commented, that it's not long before we actually have an adopted, sound plan so that we have appropriate plan-led development. Because if you think of what that money could have been used for in terms of additional council services, services to some of our most vulnerable and older residents, then I think that figure says it all, really. Planning and the officers at Waverley have done a very and carried out a very difficult job under very challenging circumstances for a number of reasons. And I think what is important, and what you're seeing drawing out in this report, and really starting to come into play, and I'd like to thank the officers and the head of planning and the portfolio holder here, is that planning is absolutely crucial for the future of this council and our wider community. And we need to make sure that we are investing, and recognising that, and investing in the service and in our officers and in the other associated services. Because if we don't, then we will continue to have issues. So there are two things we need to make sure we're really focused on. That we have a robust and sound local plan that is adopted as soon as possible, and that the inspector finds that plan sound, and that we continue to move forward, investing in both the people, but also the rest of the infrastructure for that planning department, be it IT, be it other aspects of technology, and also training and development of the staff. So I'm pleased to see the report that's before us. And as I say, I'd like to also acknowledge the hard work that's been done across a number of departments in actually bringing this together, and again, by Mrs Sims and her team as well. Colleagues, there are six recommendations. Are those agreed? Thank you. Councillor Mrs King, you've got the lead on item 13, which is the Home Improvement Policy.
Thank you very much indeed, Leader. I think the report and the policy that it covers speak for themselves, it's fairly straightforward. The key objective of the policy is to carry out adaptations to private sector homes to meet the basic housing need of disabled people, and to improve their quality of life, which will enable them to remain in their own homes. The policy also covers details of grants for relocation, prevention, safe and warm grants, the Guildford and Waverley Care Facility, and the Repair Agency, and the Handy Person Scheme. We review the level of resources for the Home Improvement Policy each year when the Better Care Fund allocation is made known. Finally, I would like to thank the Housing ONS Committee, who went through this report with a fine-tooth comb, their help, their input was really appreciated. And I fully support their recommendation that flooding, damp, and mould issues be included in the policy in future, and that has been carried out. Thank you.
Councillor King, thank you very much. Colleagues, anything that you wish to add to that? Councillor Storey, and then councillor Els.
Thank you. Just coincidentally, I received an email today from a news organisation, which makes clear that making small changes to properties for elderly people is capable of improving their life by as much as 49%. How they measure that, I've no idea. And reduce depressive symptoms by 53%, and again, I've no idea how they do that either. But suggests that maybe these changes could lead to savings for the National Health Service of something like half a billion pounds. So our small contribution, I think, should go a long way to that.
Thank you. Councillor Els.
Thank you, Leader. I just would like to say that I welcome this, and it makes very interesting reading, the report. Anything that helps those in our community who are frail, have a level of disability, and need some extra help is always welcome, as far as I'm concerned. So this is good news. Thank you.
Thank you. Colleagues, any other comments? Councillor Edwards.
Thank you, Leader. I too welcome this recommendation. And I'm pleased to note that the Housing Overview and Scrutiny Committee also welcome these changes. And it's all for the good of our residents, and I thoroughly recommend them. Thank you very much.
Councillor Edwards, thank you. Colleagues, there is one recommendation under item 13. Is that agreed? Thank you. Colleagues, item 14, which came as an additional item to your agenda following the scrutiny committees. So that's the reports and recommendations from the four committees. And unfortunately, we haven't got someone able to attend tonight to present those. But you will see that the committees during the last two months of the committee cycle have looked at the strategic review update. They've had a comprehensive briefing, and looked at Waverley Training Services, which is our superb apprenticeship arm of the council, and shortly to move to its new premises at the Memorial Hall in Farnham. And we then also have, in terms of the customer service project, housing and work that was done there, and other work that was done in terms of the future of Waverley's sheltered housing schemes. And I know, colleagues, that's something that's close to a lot of our hearts. We were very concerned about a number of the changes that were going to have to be implemented, given the cuts that were coming down from Surrey as a result of cuts in their funding. And I think that the work that has come forward on that is very, very encouraging. And I would like to thank all of the scrutiny committees, but as I say, the work of the Housing Overview and Scrutiny Committee especially. Colleagues, have you any comments you'd like to add before we move to the recommendations? Yes, councillor Edwards.
Thank you, Leader. I'd just like to congratulate the Overview and Scrutiny Committees, because there's a lot of positive stuff here. And, you know, they've worked really hard and made some very good suggestions, and particularly about improving efficiency and the customer service to our residents. I really welcome this report. It's excellent news. Well done to them.
Councillor Edwards, thank you. Colleagues, any other comments? If we move to agenda item 14, where you've actually got a number of recommendations that have come from those committees, can we take those recommendations across that agenda item on block? And are they agreed? Thank you very much, colleagues. Can we move to item 15 now, which is the lease of allotment land at Webber Road, Farnham? And that's councillor Dinas and councillor Martin. I'm not sure who's taking that. Councillor, Dinas.
Leader, I'll be very brief. This is the only allotment managed by Waverley. Transferring this to Farnham removes the cost, but allows Farnham to absorb this with all the other allotments. To avoid Secretary of State permission to transfer, which is a bit of a complex procedure, we'll transfer on a long lease that restricts the use of land to allotments only. And this is the appropriate way forward. There's one recommendation, which is on page eight of your agenda. Thank you, Leader.
Colleagues, any comments on that? I have to say that when I was elected first in 2011, this had been a topic of discussion then with Farnham Town Council. And I know there have been various hurdles along the way, shall we say, but I'm really pleased. And I think I speak, and I should really declare an interest as a town councillor as well, but I think I speak for many in Farnham who are really pleased to see this finally coming forward. And my thanks to the officers. And as I say, it's really good news that we've now got all the allotments that will be within the town council management. So that's great in terms of a recommendation. There's one recommendation under item 15. Is that agreed? Colleagues, thank you. The second item of lease renewal is the Scout Hut at the Hale Recreation Ground in Farnham. Who's taking, councillor Dinas?
I think I'm the lease king tonight. The second Farnham Scout Group at Hale have been leasing the Scout Hut for many years. The lease is up for renewal, and at least the 25 years will allow the club to plan and fund works. Again, this is an appropriate and sensible way forward. And again, there's one recommendation, which is on page eight of your agenda. Thank you, Leader.
Colleagues, any further comments on that? In that case, one recommendation under item 16. Is that agreed? Thank you. We now move to item 17, which is the interim managing director's actions. And if I could ask Mr Hallward if he'd like to introduce that item for us.
Certainly. Thank you, Leader. And with your indulgence, before I do that, I'd just like to say something about the webcasting this evening. So firstly, really, my apologies to you, Leader, and to councillors, and indeed to the three people who are watching online, and to those who might log in later. Clearly, we've been having some glitches this evening, and indeed, we had yesterday at the Joint Planning Committee, when some of these issues happened a couple of weeks ago, the installation company came in, reconfigured the system, did quite a lot of testing, and it worked for a while. And it's not now, at least not sufficiently. We are broadcasting on audio, and as you can see, we've got the wide screenshot. I have written to the managing director of the company, asking for urgent resolution, and I will follow that up again tonight after this meeting. It's something we really need to sort out. But so my apologies to you and to those trying to follow proceedings from elsewhere. So there are two interim managing director actions that I'd like to report to you. They're both for noting, and you see them summarised in your papers. The first is around the air quality audit. And as you're aware, we commissioned an independent investigation and audit into our air quality reporting, following our discovery earlier this year that some of the reported data was wrong. So this investigation carries on. But as we didn't expect to commission the investigation in the first place, no budget provision was in place when you approved the budget in February. So therefore, through this decision, I've approved this supplementary estimate of £15,000 for this unbudgeted work. So that would be the first item to note. The second, around Higley's LEP revenue bid. So I've authorised up to £30,000 as Waverley Borough Council's contribution to a bid by Surrey County Council to the Homes and Community Agency's Housing Infrastructure Fund. So the overall value of the bid would be £12 million for capacity improvements on the A31, which would be intended to mitigate existing delay, congestion, and pollution, and to support expected future housing. So we haven't heard back from the HCA on that. We would expect to hear the result of that bid in early part of 2018. So those are the two actions that I put before you for noting.
Mr Hallward, thank you. I think, obviously, we're really pleased that at least the issues around the air quality have been recognised, and work is ongoing there. And in terms of the Higley's, the LEP bid, I think we all recognise that there are real concerns in Farnham, that, you know, improvements are needed. Infrastructure is always at the top of everyone's lips whenever any form of planning is mentioned. And we really do need to ensure that that part of the A31 and the issues that surround it are properly addressed going forward. So I will continue to really lobby, and I'm really pleased that, as a council, we've been able to find funding to actually support that bid. It is a significant sum that Waverley have put into that bid, but I feel it absolutely appropriate that we do that. And likewise, if we have the opportunity in other parts of the borough where we feel, again, that it's appropriate, then we will be looking very carefully at any other opportunities that, should they come forward. Mr Hallward, thank you very much for that update. Colleagues, those updates...
Colleagues, those updates were for noting, and we'll move to item 18, which is the update report from the interim managing director. And you will see that starts on page 175, and that's a very detailed report. Mister Hallwood, would you like to speak on that at all?
Certainly, leader, thank you very much. So this is an update report following your decision at the full council meeting in July, and it really reports back on what I've been up to and what colleagues have been up to over the last few months. As you know, you agreed to engage with me and with East Hampshire District Council and Havant Borough Council to supply your head of paid service function, which I then outline on page 176, and so there's an update there. And in particular, I'd like to say thank you for your warm welcome, councillors, and indeed to my colleagues. It's been a very good journey so far that we're all on, we've been having lots of fun, and there's still some time to run in terms of the current arrangement, so still lots to do. The second area is really around supporting you and developing your strategic direction and approach as a council for the benefit of the borough, and that's outlined then on 176 and 177. And we also had an excellent set of workshops last week with other councillors, who were all very much engaged, very committed, very passionate about where they would like to see the future direction of the borough and indeed the council to support it in these exceptionally challenging times for public services. So that journey is still continuing, it's a very challenging one for us all, for those of us who really care about local places and care about local services in local places, and I look forward to continuing that discussion with you over the coming months, and helping us all get to a very stable situation, or a more stable situation, particularly as we work with other public service providers and engage more for, trying to do more in the challenging financial situation that is coming down the pike. So thank you very much for that.
councillor Edwards.
Leader, thank you. When I read this report, one word sprung to mind, and that was exciting. I must congratulate Tom on this report, and say I'm looking forward with excitement to the future, and well done, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Edwards. Colleagues, any other comments? I think since the beginning of August, it's fair to say that we have been moving at a pace, and certainly in his three days a week, mister Hallwood has been contributing an awful lot to this council. I was really pleased to see the, and hear a lot of the feedback from the councillor workshops that were held, and I know a lot of the themes coming out and the direction of travel we want to go in as a council and as an administration are general themes that we've actually been articulating over the past few months, and for a few months prior to mister Hallwood becoming the interim managing director. And I think it's really encouraging to see that, you know, we've got lots of support and buy-in from our officers, from our other directors, and also from our partner authority, East Hampshire and Havant, who have, you know, let us utilise mister Hallwood three days a week here. And I think what's really encouraging to see is the way that, you know, the ideas and the route of travel for this council is now really starting to take shape. This is a huge change for this council, and it's not going to happen overnight, but I think, yes, we all would thank both mister Hallwood, and as I say, the officers who have really embraced this, and that's been great to see here. Thank you. Mister Hallwood.
Leader and councillors, thank you very much for your comments and for your support. There's something really quite important and special about Waverley Borough, that you exhibit among yourselves, and that's shared with your residents, and that is that Waverley's residents are not backward about coming forward. You're very passionate and you're very committed to trying to find the right solutions, and I think that's something that is really, that we really shouldn't be shy of, and we should really engage quite strongly with. It is a benefit to this council that the local residents are so passionate about their place, and I think that's something that can be challenging at times, but it's going to be very important for us as we try and find the solutions in the coming months and years.
Thank you, mister Hallwood. Colleagues, we've got the report before you, are there, is there, or is there anything else you want to add, or can we move to the recommendation? Okay, in that case, we'll move to the recommendation on item 18, and we've noted the update of the report, and my thanks, as I say, to mister Hallwood and colleagues. We'll now move to item 19, and I'll just give a few minutes for both mister Hallwood and mister Clark to leave the chamber.
Colleagues, I intend to hopefully run this in open, this part of the report, item 19, the framework for Waverley's new chief executive and strategic director role. So you'll recall that back in June, the council agreed that we had very, very strong, very robust ambitions going forward, and we felt at that time that we would require a principal executive in a leadership role, such as a chief executive or an executive director, to ensure that the council was very robust in terms of its leadership. We then had a meeting in July, in which we agreed the interim arrangements for the role of head of paid service, and what we now have, and what you now have before you, is the report that outlines the recruitment framework for the council's chief executive or head of paid service, as known, and also strategic director roles. So you will be aware that we have a number of changes that are happening at Waverley. We need to ensure that the interim arrangements until the appointment of a chief executive, a permanent chief executive are in place, and you'll also be aware that mister Hallwood's contract is due to end in January. So one of the proposals this evening before you is that we actually extend his contract as Waverley's interim managing director, and given that mister Roberts will be leaving us in the latter part of December, it's also proposed that mister Hallwood take on the role of electoral registration officer and returning officer on an interim basis, a role again that he has experience of, and that would be with effect from the first of January. Clearly, though, these are roles that we need to make sure are agreed in terms of over the next few weeks, so that we adhere to all the local government statute. We've also, as I mentioned, mister Roberts will sadly be leaving the organisation, he's moving to a new role, and a role that takes about two and a half hours off his daily commute to Waverley, and is a good promotion for him. So we all pass on our best wishes, and my congratulations to him for that, but unfortunately, that also leaves us as an organisation one strategic director down. So you will see in your exempt annex, exempt annex two, that the decision has been taken following interviews, and I'd like to thank councillor Mrs King for her help with those interviews, that the council will appoint Annie Reiten on an interim basis to this role, and her CV is attached, as I say, in exempt annex two. You will see that she comes with a wealth of experience, and I think, given the journey that this council's currently on, again, she's going to fit very well into the organisation on an interim basis. We've obviously looked at the posts of both strategic director and decided that those roles need to remain, although there will be some changes to the actual roles and responsibilities there. And we've worked with Solace in Business, who many of you will know for their work in local government, a very highly regarded practice, who have conducted a benchmarking exercise of sort of previously published salaries within the chief executive director role. One of the things that I and this executive are very keen to make sure is that the future salary scales and pay awarded to the directors, the strategic directors and chief executive are very transparent, and for that reason, we're recommending that the total remuneration for the new post of chief executive is £124,000, and that Waverley's approved pay scale is updated accordingly. Now, you will see on page 182 of your papers, colleagues, that Solace have been really helpful in terms of helping to benchmark against district and borough chief executive salaries in both West Sussex, Hampshire and Surrey, so that we can see sort of the upper and sort of lower quartiles, and make sure that our salaries and the benchmarking exercise actually, it does give us the right sort of salary so that we ensure that we have the right candidate who will apply and move into this role. We're asking a lot from both our directors and our chief executive, and we will be asking a lot, and we need to make sure that we balance, obviously, you know, being mindful that we are using, this is, you know, taxpayers' money, but also that the actual role itself is a competitively paid role. And so to that end, and as I say, we've got a number of recommendations coming from this report, some six recommendations. We have recommendations for the continuance and the appointment of mister Hallwood as returning officer. We have the appointment as an interim strategic director of Ms Reiten, and we have the revised proposal that the permanent senior management team be comprised of a full-time chief executive and two full-time strategic directors with effect from the first of January. And you will see also that there are other recommendations relating to pay scales and payment in respect of the statutory functions of returning an electoral officer. So colleagues, there are six recommendations in all, culminating in the fact, in the proposed recruitment process commences to this chief executive role, a permanent role, and we are advised and supported in that by Solace in Business. Colleagues, any comments that you wish to make? In that case, are those six recommendations before you agree?
Agreed.
Thank you. In that case, we have item 20, which is the exclusion of press and public, but I don't think we have anything further that we need to exclude anyone from, so if mister Clark and mister Hallwood want to come back, that's fine, and there's nothing to be considered an exempt, as Mr McQuillan. In that case, colleagues, thank you very much, and good night and safe journeys home.